I'm gonna call the Planning Board and Zoning Commission meeting to order for March 26, 2025. Have the roll call, please.
Um, Gray?
Here.
Topin?
Here.
Echoes, Echols Bell?
Here.
Fousey?
Here.
Whistler?
Here.
Dee Benedetto?
Here.
Bloomer?
Here.
Kate?
All right. Um, next on the agenda is minutes. And I have a motion to approve the minutes for, um, March 12, 2025.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for March 12, 2025.
A second.
All right. Any discussion, corrections, treat?
Uh, is it Brownfield or Brownfields?
Leave it to Ness.
I think.
No, Browns.
Brownfield, because I couldn't tell if it was a big part of their name or just.
Yeah, I think it's Brownfield.
Brownfield, so it's correct, good, yeah, no, that's just the only question I had.
Can you just repeat, can you repeat who, uh, motioned and who seconded?
Uh, Chelsea Tupin motioned and Sue Poisey, I seconded.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion on the minutes? Can I, roll call again, Jeremy, our approval minutes?
Kate, uh, hold on just a second, let me get to it, sorry, I got, I don't know if you can hear the dogs, I apologize. Um, somebody showed up at the door here. Um, Gray?
Fuck up.
Topin?
Yes.
Uh, Echols Bell?
Yes.
Fousey?
Yes.
Whistler?
Yeah.
Dee Benedetto?
Yes.
Bloomer?
Yes.
Kate?
All right, uh, next on the agenda is any new business and there is none. Um, I think open up for public comment on the agenda, on it, for items that are on the agenda.
Were you, were you gonna do communications from the board slash council section?
Yes.
Oh, yes, sorry about that. Um, there's nothing new to remove, report on Urban Renewal Agency update, uh, City Council?
Um, the only thing in particular is we'll be having the resolution for intent for the Planning Board to review marijuana zoning. That'll be coming up for discussion next meeting and then likely up for a vote the following. But again, that's not pushing the timeline, it's just making sure that that is something that is being reviewed when zoning is getting reviewed. Um, otherwise, we're also working on, uh, process for permanent structures on land, city-owned land. Um, specifically, we got, or the Community Foundation and other members of the community got granted, or got a great pilot grant, uh, that will likely result in permanent structures being built. So we want to have that process in place for when that happens. Um, and that's gonna probably not be a quick turnaround on it, but that'll probably be something that does come back to the Planning Board and affect you guys in some way or another, so. That's it.
Yeah, you might mention the cultivation.
Right, so along with, um, the marijuana part of that is when we voted to approve marijuana businesses in Red Lodge and in the county, it was kind of a bulk order of what those businesses are. So that includes cultivation, labs, all of those pieces. And those are things that we do have to address by law in zoning, which currently is not. So, um, that is something that, uh, we are actually working on language to potentially put it back to a vote to the city, um, to where people can exclude, uh, marijuana businesses or just cultivators specifically. And that is what's going on.
That was the intent that came out of the original Planning Board, um, recommendation to the council. And somehow it got more generalized at the council levels, I guess you knew that, Chelsea.
Mm-hmm, so yeah, we're working on redoing the ordinance at the city level, just specifically addressing marijuana businesses. But then we'll also need to address zoning to make sure that they're compliant for one and then also cohesive, so.
Any other questions of Chelsea? Um, uh, report from the county?
We, we've had one small little subdivision come on this docket and there's nothing really major to report.
Yep. Um, communication from the mayor?
No, I think, uh, Chelsea did a good job of summarizing it, so. Anything else at this particular council?
All right, so back down to, uh, there's no new business on the agenda. Let's open it up for a public comment on items on the agenda. Anybody online have any comment on any items on the agenda? Primarily discussions, old business associated with, uh, the draft growth policy and then continuing, uh, review of the downtown master plan. Hearing none, um, move on to old business. Any update on the final draft growth policy?
Um, so we did, uh, well, I pulled this up. Um, so Greg did work with, uh, the city to get the press release, uh, provided for posting. Um, and it was given to the Red Lodge Buzz, city Facebook page, uh, and provided to the Chamber of Commerce. Um, and the legal notice appeared in the 320 edition of the Carbon County News. So those, uh, those press releases and notices are out for the growth policy, uh, public hearing. I think that's it for an update on that.
Is it on the webpage?
It is.
And have we received any public, uh, emails or comments that have come into the, uh, Planning Board, um, address?
None that I am aware of as of yet.
All right, thank you. The agreement was as those came in, you were gonna share them with the Planning Board members, is that correct?
Understood.
All right, thank you.
Uh, the only, only question I had was, uh, did it get pushed through the city Google Groups? I didn't see anything about, usually I get notices about upcoming meetings, but I didn't see anything come through relative to posting of the growth policy.
Generally, yeah, meetings, but that's when it gets closer, that's when we do our public notice stuff. So, we've announced it at, at council meeting twice, one that it would be and then that it was out. And it's out and validated, and we had Kevin put draft on, it's down at the bottom rather than, than across it, but. But I don't think we generally send that stuff out via Google Groups, I don't see where we couldn't, but.
Well, like, yeah, I wasn't necessarily saying send out the document, but send out, I guess, send out a notice on Google Groups that it's available for review and how to get to it.
Okay.
Otherwise, I think, yeah, the news, uh, news article looked pretty good and, uh, we'll see, hopefully we'll get some feedback from the community.
Couple people have asked me about it, so I know where it's getting out, yeah.
The only other suggestion, I guess I was thinking about is, is maybe, do we also need to sort of send notices to like the Parks Board and Bear Tooth Trails and some of the other city boards that are being addressed in the growth policy?
Generally convert, yeah.
Um, I mean, I don't, I mean, there's no requirement that we do it, I mean, I think they've been coordinated with already. But, I mean, hopefully they've seen the notices, but, I mean, we could certainly work to reach out to those groups and just let them know it's out there if they don't know already.
Could we ask, could we ask Danae to send it out, uh, to the chairman of each of those committees or the members of each of those committees?
Yep, I've taken that note.
Then also to Jeff's question, I, I don't have it right in front of me, but I thought in the, one of the notices, it mentioned that it would be posted on the webpage.
It's it.
I didn't understand the question, Jeff, Jeff asked us if it is and it is, so it did say it was gonna be and it is.
Okay. And the meeting date was posted on the webpage? It was posted in the, in the, yeah, okay.
Any other questions or discussion about the growth policy? All right. Move along to, uh, review of the downtown master plan. And, uh, I think we're gonna start on section that's where the heading is optimized, optimized tourism. On my pa, on my document, it's page 19, but it might be another page on, on your other, others, people's copies.
Yeah, the, uh, yeah, I was told that 19, I wasn't at the last meeting, but, uh, Greg said 19 is where we're starting, so.
Okay.
And then, as we've done in the past, since Sandy has been involved in the review of this document as well, it's just gonna ask the board's approval that she can participate in this discussion as well?
Yes.
So, if you wanna come a little bit closer?
Have a table.
Hey Dave, do you wanna allow him to share?
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
You got three screens going, no big deal.
Dave's, Dave's a bitty gizzy guy there, jumping around.
I found out how I accidentally killed the meeting earlier, but that's okay.
But that's good to know.
Oh, I didn't do it when I said it, but there it is.
I, I can share now. There we go. All right, can everybody see that?
Mm-hmm.
Is that big enough?
Looks good from my point of view.
Great.
I just gotta move this, my screen, my, the faces around so I can actually see the tech. I'm already working on one screen here, so, there with a second. There we go, I think I got it now, all right. Um, I think we're, are we at the top of, uh, 19? We're starting at the top? Okay.
Yes.
All right, so, let's see, so it looks like Conley had a comment, where did this come from? I doubt it is from local business community. Uh-oh.
Broke it.
I am, I'm struggling, hold on a second. I'm used to having two screens at work, so, trying to, trying to get this figured out here. There, all right, can everybody still see everything okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay, who wants to start here, it looks like I said, it looks like we got a comment, um, from Conley, where did this come from, I doubt it's from local business community. And I think it, it has, it has, it's this community benefit text at the end.
It was that, it says during the busy summer months, the local business community has begun to reconsider their marketing focus to often optimize tourism for maximum. Why would the business, local business community reconsider their marketing focus? I am kinda confused. Because for the community benefit, just the whole thing just seemed a little odd.
So instead of focusing, anyway.
It was the reconsider their marketing focus. Why would they?
I mean, can I, I'll speak to it, um, just in terms of when we do our marketing, we put a good focus on shoulder season, winter, that's where we're spending our energy and our money.
Trying to expand.
Yeah, trying to expand on those hurting seasons versus the summer months where we have consistent revenue and visitation. So, and it's not saying that we don't market on the summer and we, it's not like we're pushing people out by any means, but it's something that you have to, don't have to put as much energy into.
I just think that the paragraph is very negative. It says, in response to mounting tourism pressures, namely traffic congestion, limited parking and noise. Well, I'm gonna rush to the downtown. You know, during the busy summer months, so I won't go there then because it sounds horrible. It's noisy, there's no parking and there's traffic.
I agree, I'd like to see that moved.
I can understand that the local business community wants to expand their summer season to the shoulder seasons, expand into, into May and June or September, October. But that's expanding and that's a positive as opposed to the negative calling out traffic congestion and parking issues.
I think what you could probably rephrase that to is according to feedback from the chamber, cut in response to mounting tourism pressures, namely traffic congestion, limited parking and noise during the busy summer months. Just change it to according to feedback from the chamber, the local business community has begun to reconsider their marketing focus to optimize tourism for maximum community benefit during all seasons of the year.
I was, I was going south, it's, I, I.
I like that.
They were going, but they didn't get there.
Yeah, it's pretty, yeah, it's pretty simple.
Kate, got that.
This next paragraph, I, I, I just don't like it at all, we would like to have fewer people visiting Red Lodge, is that true? I don't think so.
No. I don't like it.
No, get rid of that.
I believe that's catchy.
And I think the emphasis on the summer month, I just think that whole paragraph needs to be rewritten.
Mm-hmm. And again, I think it could just be removing that first sentence, because it is a quote. So, but if you just start the quote at, with a focus on cultivating high-value visitor for the warm season while still continuing to grow the off-season, the goal is to encourage residents and visitors to keep Red Lodge area a safe tourism destination by traveling responsibly. I think that puts a focus on, again, creating good tourism without saying, let's get rid of people.
Yeah, and, and I would take out, you know, all right, travel responsibly, I'd take out leaving no trace, uh, practicing wildlife and forest safety, um, be respectful and patient, I would take out being kind, be respectful and patient with one another, recreate responsibly, um.
Well, again, it is a quote, so.
Yeah, but who quotes, yeah, I, let's take it out and, and paraphrase it then and take the quotes out.
Yeah.
Have you ever heard of Destination Marketing Organization Plan as a group?
No.
I neither, I haven't either, I don't know, I don't know this group that we're quoting.
Yeah.
Maybe AI came up with it.
I would take that all out, I would take the quotes out and just maybe paraphrase it like we've just said.
Yeah, I'm just gonna put in here reword, reword. Kevin and I can work on something there, so.
You got the gist of what we're looking at here, we gotta stay positive.
Yeah, no, I, I agree, this, this, the, these first couple ones are definitely, there's some negative aspects to those, those, uh, those parts, so.
And, and being kind is, and, oh, what is that? I mean, I, obviously respectful and patient with one another and by, by recreating responsibly, I mean, that's, that's a fair statement.
Okay. Let's see, we got a comment here on gentrification. How many people know what gentrification means?
I think a fair amount.
A lot of people do.
I think that's a pretty common word, I think that's a pretty common word anymore.
Especially anymore, yeah.
I don't know about Disney, Disneyfication?
Disneyfication, yeah.
Well, I had to look it up and, and I thought I was a fairly educated guy and if we're writing this for a common reader, I, I don't know.
Oh, we could, we could work on some simplified words for this, so if that's, um, I'll just, I'll just put.
I'm not even sure I like the reference of Disneyfication or gentrification. Avoiding the dreaded.
Maintaining the ba, that balance will be vital to long-term success of the town and avoiding the dreaded, as, we could just take out the last part.
I just put a period after downtown.
Or we just take that out like that.
Be welcoming for all, say it the nice way, not the mean way.
Maintaining, we'll just leave it at maintaining that balance will be vital to the long-term success of the downtown.
Period.
Great.
Okay. Okay, uh, let's see, we got a comment here, Conley downtown as well as on Broadway.
I, I think that we've had a, trying to determine what downtown is. I, I noticed that then we do the P factory, which is way over on Third Street. Is that really downtown? We, the downtown limit that we're talking about keeps moving around. And so I'm never sure what really downtown means anymore. I agree that Broadway and Roosevelt Center are there, but then when I keep looking at target for redevelopment, there's very few buildings in downtown.
Yeah.
For redevelopment. It, it's more in the community entrances, but probably both of them. I don't know.
Well, last time we talked about, we, we had so many downtowns and no definitions, so we came up with two, right? The historical downtown versus CBD, Central Business District. So we said Central Business District was what, fifth to fourteenth?
Eighth to fourteenth.
Eighth to fourteenth, and then the larger one is fifth, right? Fifth up. So fifth to nineteenth, fifth, well, because you mentioned Roosevelt, so now I'm confused again.
I thought we said to nineteenth was the expanded downtown.
So we're gonna say that's downtown Central Business District? Because the story, that's not historic, but downtown is.
We really need to nail this down. Yeah.
Yeah, it's really important.
We need, we need.
The whole thing's based on downtown, but we have no definition. And we don't know where it is.
I think you could say Central Business District and then you could, could say extended Central Business District, District or extended downtown or something like that.
Yeah.
Because obviously the density is higher in the middle. But it, take, summertime in particular, you take Roosevelt and it's happening in place.
Yeah, that's growing, yeah.
And again, there's a lot of opportunity down there.
And the P cannery has the same opportunities, you know, extended down that way and up, right?
And they're on Third.
But that's what the whole purpose of the U R D is for, you know, to, to, to draw a more business and, and.
Kind of expand.
Housing, right? Expand the downtown, yeah. So, well, we can't go back into zoning ahead of this, so we need to come up with something that, that works.
So do we wanna just say in this first sentence then, instead of downtown area including several retail stores along Broadway and numerous arts-related, but do we wanna just say, uh, tourism-related businesses, um, in the Central Business District? And leave it at that?
No, so, okay, so say the two again, we have the Central Bus, and that's the small one. And, but that's the small one, so Central's the big one.
Central's the big one, which is only fifth to fourteenth.
But I feel like.
And we have no, we don't have an extended one that includes up to nineteenth and down to third, just so the whole length of.
I would, I would like to see it up to nineteenth though, because with Roosevelt and parks that we might be developing down in that direction, and there's actually places where we can develop and find underutilized properties that can be worked on. So it'd be really important to actually include it from, and that's also the entrance to the downtown, that's focused on throughout this document.
So, I have a ques, I have a question. Um, can we, no, I, we, I assume, and I, I apologize, I have, I have been kinda out of this for a, a little bit with, because I have, but i- is, is all this discussed, Kevin, or, or somebody in, it, earlier in this document of where this focus of this document is? It seems like maybe we're rehashing this that we've maybe already talked about somewhere?
Jeremy, this came up because there were several different ways of calling out downtown and we were always confused about, so somehow core business district crept into this and then the other things that we were talking about, the, the historic as well as CBD. So that's how we opened this discussion, but they were already in the document and it's very confusing without us nailing down what we're gonna focus on here, what we're talking about.
Well, we're, we're, my, my concern is we're already into page nineteen of this document and it seems like that should be defined early in the document, not, not way through the document. So, I, I think maybe we need to work on that somewhere, um, and define that better. But in the context of this paragraph, it really is just talking about, um, you know, vacant and underutilized properties being redeveloped. My thought is, I think you can almost take, in recent years, Red Lodge has attracted additional tourism-related businesses. Take this out, right, delete that part of the sentence and then to maintain this momentum, vacant and underutilized properties. And then maybe we say, in the, I, maybe we just need to point this wherever this is defined or, or talk about, I don't know. Like, we need to work on this a little bit, it seems like.
There a map, I think a map would be helpful, and.
Um, on the introduction, it, uh, dates back to the, to this end, the Red Lodge Historic District was created in 1983, da-da-da-da-da-da. This effort was followed by the creation of the 1984 Downtown Red Lodge Revitalization Plan.
Eighteen sixty-six one?
To guide the historic renovation. So this, on the introduction refers to the historic. So this, on the introduction refers to the historic district. And I'm kind of, um, wondering that maybe what we need to stop calling it downtown perhaps and call it the Main Street. Because this is the Main Street Program, right?
I think it has to be a downtown document. I think that's actually.
Yes, yeah, I mean, this, this document is tar- it's a downtown master plan, right? So it's, it's targeting the downtown for Red Lodge. So somewhere we need to define what is the downtown, right? That, usually that's some kind of a historic commercial area that, you know, has been typically used for a hundred years for businesses, right? It's typically not the outlier areas that are like your, your new business district, business areas, uh, you know, coming into town from the, you know, from each end where new businesses have come in, that sort of thing. This is targeted to development and, and being, and revitalization of your downtown. Like the historic downtown area. That's what this document targets.
So that's Eighth to Fourteenth.
Did you have something to say?
I'll, I'll defer to Al. Al, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm going back to my notes here. When we had our forum, we had a lot of discussion about the definition of downtown and I'm not sure we came up with anything that everybody agreed to, but we certainly, I've got written down here in my notes that are several months old. Core, transitional, and, and marginal, all downtown. And so you have your core, you have your core downtown area, then the people talked about expanding it uh, north and south as well as east and west. And, and I know the Babcock and Miles was mentioned and, and, uh, places like that, so. I, I, I'm not sure how to define have a clear definition of downtown. I don't know if we've ever come up with one.
Byproduct of us doing growth policy and downtown master policy really close, and I think a lot of the conversations here, we start talking about expanding and including Roosevelt in this is stuff that probably goes in the growth policy. I look at this down policy, downtown policy is like the click to expand. And it's pick a border. Here's where it is and there's where it is. That doesn't mean you can't talk about it if it's not in there. It means it gets talked about in the growth policy, not in this document.
So we could stick with the two definitions, the core and the overlay, or not core, Central Business District and the overlay.
Yeah, core or central would work for me, um, but then there's I, I'm not sure how to define the, what you consider the transitional ones. They're, they're downtown, they're businesses um, that are in the edge or on the outside of the core of the downtown, uh, area.
Just whatever you define on page one or two or back when it is, this is what it is.
Yeah, I think Dave made a good point. I think we're mixing a little bit of growth policy direction into here. When we talk about going from, say, Fourteenth to Nineteenth Street. That's, that's, uh, Central Business Transition Zone. Because there's, there's a lot of res- residential properties in that stretch. And then on the, on the north end, it's that, that one block that's, uh, between Eighth and Seventh also has a number of primary residences there and that is also what's considered transitional. So then anything beyond that became community entrance. So we, I, I think if we kinda stick to those definitions within, as, as they're kinda defined within the growth policy and then this document, I think kinda maybe focuses more on, on what we wanna call core or central business with district. Which is from Fourteenth to
And central was bigger, historic. And then Central Business District, I think incorporated places like the Regis and the Babcock and Miles. Or, or could, could do that in the future, but whatever the definition is today, it's definitely longer than historic. Or possibly wider.
Is it worth expanding the Central Business District? Because this is the opportunity to do that, isn't it?
We have to go back to the zoning document first to change.
Yeah, I thi- I think the place to deal with that is, is in the growth policy. Because that's the overarching document. This, this one, I think is, should be more focused on on really the and then, and then if we, if you're talking about expansion, I, I would think who'd wanna expand east and west, it would be to incorporate, um, things on, you know, there's businesses on primarily like Babcock and Miles and if the county's building a new building, administrative building where the, uh, assisted living facility is, that's kind of expands kind of the concept of of Central Business District, I think.
Jeff, the issue that came up in the forum were some of those businesses like you just mentioned Babcock and Miles, Regis, um, Ace Hardware, uh, Boyd's. They are part of the business district, uh, as it were. So we talked about transition north and south, but then there was discussion about how far east and west you go.
Yeah, I think, you know, then you, then you get into the whole question of what we've got currently in set in, uh, C four, C three? That which is that whole southwest or south, north, northeast part of town. So I, I, I think we're, I, I think, I don't think we wanna get, expand this thing that far out. I mean, and, and Boyd's is clear down on
Cooper.
Hagan and such, so.
I, I, I think here, the downtown plan is this continuity visioning exercise. And if you're talking Regis, we're not talking about continuity and making it fit in that downtown district because it's surrounded by houses. We're talking about Boyd, that's not part of, the continuity is Broadway and a road off of either side between Eighth and Fourteenth, I think is, or, or some, something very, very close to that.
On page five, it says for the purposes of this plan, the downtown Red Lodge planning area consists of a core business area extending from Eighth to Fourteenth Street and relevant cross streets and a transition area extending to the north and south. So, um, it says the core business area, Broadway Avenue of Platte, Oaks Hauser, from Eighth to Fourteenth. So there is a transition zone area from Third uh, Broadway Avenue, Third Street, to the intersection of Highway three oh eight.
I think that's important because again, a big part of this document is talking about your entryways and the importance of that. And also there's businesses there on the southern end and it, again, it goes into it into this document where there's businesses that want to see continued foot traffic outside of this core area into those further pieces. And I think it's something that now we have an opportunity to put a focus on to where this is the goals, right? These are the dreams. This is what we want to see. This isn't what we have been doing and preserving what we have. It's partly that, but it's also how can we look a little bit bigger?
But I think that you gotta, you gotta balance it though, be, you gotta balance it though, because this is the downtown master plan. And then we have a growth policy that also deals with commercial outside of that. And so I think there's a balancing act, like this, this downtown master plan is not intended to be a business development plan for the entire city of Red Lodge. It's a focus on the downtown. So that's where I think we gotta, we gotta balance this with what's in the growth policy outside of the downtown defined area.
I, I just think we need to think about this a little bit and maybe we can't solve it tonight, but the one thing I want to avoid is there's some long-term businesses that I don't want them to feel that they're being excluded from, from this document by this statement. If that makes any sense.
Well, so I thi- I guess I would go back to the definition that, um, that was on five. And, and I think if you guys would review that for the next meeting, so that we can, you know, that's gonna be, that's, that's the beginning of the document. That's where we define the area that we're talking about in the rest of the document. So now through the rest of the document past that, whenever it says the downtown area, we don't need to restate what that area is. Because we've already defined it earlier in the document, right? So like i- in, in this case, like this paragraph, I would have kept out retail stores along Broadway, newer, so I would have just left that out and just said in the downtown area, because we've already decided, we've already defined what that downtown area is earlier, right? And so that's why I think I, I would, I guess my, my question back to you guys is to look at that definition and that defined area on page five of the document. And then next meeting, let's hit that first and make sure that we're all on board with that, because that's what sets the tone or the what we're, our study area for the rest of the document.
Sounds like a good plan to me, Jeremy.
So let's every, put that on your list to look at that and we'll revisit that at the next meeting and get that pinned down at the next meeting.
So for this paragraph, will you just use downtown area?
Yes, so I think we just keep, so I, I struck out, you know, the, that, that last part of the first sentence. And then I, I think, I mean, ultimately the idea is if, if there's opportunities redevelopment, redevelop in the downtown area, we just wanna we want to, uh, we wanna do, you know, do those. So I don't think we need to identify specific sites or specific areas for that. Because those could change over time, right? I think we wanna be careful on being too specific. And so I think by taking out the last part of that first sentence, the rest of that, the rest of that, uh, paragraph becomes more broad. And we just say, we should be looking for opportunities to utilize vacant or underli- underutilized properties in the downtown area, period, for redevelopment, right? And then that's just a broader statement. So just like the growth policy, we want to avoid, I think we want to avoid specific targeted, like we wanna try to be broad, like we're, we're high level, you know, planning. We're not trying to you know, pinpoint specific properties or specific things, you know, unless they're, unless we have an idea of some things like you know, policies or, or objectives or something that we wanna target, but, um, ultimately this is supposed to be high level, so. All right, are we good to move on? Okay, next section, we have a comment on theatorium buildings.
Well, the theatorium is in the downtown area, but the, uh, P Factory is not. The canner, well, you refer to it as the canary. It's definitely, it's actually on Second Street.
So what, what if we just, what if we, again, what, instead of specifically identifying anything, let's just take those out and say previous planning efforts have identified underutilized properties as excellent redevelopment opportunities and just leave it at that.
I think that's safer.
I guess my only comment, I, I would scratch the canary because as Sandy said, that's not part of the downtown. I, in some ways, I like I like calling out the theatorium because that's been sitting with for a long time as an underutilized building with some discussions about different opportunities or things to do with that building. So I, in this case, I don't have any issue with actually calling calling the theatorium out as, as an opportunity just to put some, some emphasis and some focus on that.
Why not, what use the picture nice and big with underneath theatorium?
Well, we could say, uh, properties in downtown area such as the theatorium as excellent redevelopment, just the singular. That'd be fine, right? As long as the canary's gone, I think everybody agrees with that. The canary gone.
So why is the canary, I'm sorry, I just.
Apparently it's, it's not downtown.
It's on Second Street.
Okay.
So such as the theatorium. And then you can have the picture of the theatorium and maybe get one without a car in front.
Um, I did have a question on the second paragraph of specialty niche or business niche. Uh, the last sentence, through selective recruitment? Are we recruiting businesses to come to Red Lodge?
Where's that at?
Um, so the paragraph that starts in recent years, it's the last sentence. Through selective recruitment.
Are they speaking about the opportunity zone that was provided way back, I guess?
Still is.
Is it still? So that, without naming what the recruitment opportunity is, we don't know.
And it's federal, so who knows?
Yeah, we don't know.
Yeah, I don't know who says through selective recruitment. We don't we'll take any recruitment.
Yeah, come, come to work.
Well, we'll just cut that out. We'll just say new businesses can fill existing gaps in retail professional services and reinforce overall appeal of downtown.
Yeah, that's a good catch. I missed that. We don't do selective recruitment.
Yeah, the city, the, the city wouldn't be, I mean, you're not, I mean, you can recruit businesses, I suppose. You could go out and try, but that's really the the chamber or, or a, or a business, you know, business assistance type. You know, development agency would, would do that kind of thing. The city wouldn't be actively trying to recruit certain businesses necessarily.
No, I, I miss that. That's a good catch.
And then under that sentence, uh, where appropriate well-designed landscape features. Is it appropriate to put a category of aesthetic on, above that? It's not really specialty business niche. It's kind of its own thing, so I was thinking aesthetic. So that'd be where appropriate well-designed landscape features can be used to shield up or soften the appearance. Again, I feel like that could just be aesthetics.
Like, like, like down below where it says underutilized. Would just say aesthetics above?
And then I would also just delete the sentence that says I E. Repair shop or drive-in bank.
So you, so you wanna say where appropriate aesthetics can be used.
No, like a header, like the header of that paragraph would be aesthetic.
Oh, I see, I see what you're saying. Okay, so here. I don't think I spelled that right.
No, that's okay.
Bell check. Bell check is our friend, right? So, okay, I got that in there.
And again, I would just remove I E. The repair shop or the drive-in bank.
I would too.
Of that section. You don't need to call him out for being ugly.
Okay, are we good to move on to twenty?
What about manufacturing? Under utilized properties. Al had something on that.
I, it was, uh, it was identify, it was clarifying the figures twenty-one and twenty-two. I think those are on the next page here.
We didn't know which one.
Under, underutilized properties, that first paragraph that we've been messing with. We added such as the theatorium as excellent redevelopment opportunities for new tourism-related businesses, affordable housing, professional services, and specialty manufacturing.
Yeah, that, again, he was just trying to clear up the, the difference between the canary and the theatorium.
Twenty-one and which one is figure twenty-two?
Well, we wanna take the canary out, right? So I think we wanna take this out anyway. And so it's just, it's just gonna be one figure anyways now. And this is, this is the canary, right?
The one on the right is the canary.
Yep, so. All right.
On that word manufacturing, instead of manufacturing, do we wanna use, say, artisan?
I think that's less industrial than manufacturing.
Don't have an issue, issue with manufacturing, no.
I think, well, I think art, we, we've been trying to insert artisan and for those types of productions over manufacturing or industrial work, right?
And that, I think, I think artisan kind of. Identifies it as, as one, it's specialty and two, it's more individually.
So do you wanna say artisan manufacturing?
No, just artisan.
You might could throw it light manufacturing, but you might not wanna go that far.
I don't, I think, you know, for, I don't think we're encouraging light industry or manufacturing in the downtown area.
Yeah.
Right, we want just.
I think it's more artisan kinds of things, e- even if you look at back alley manner. Metals, that's kinda more of an artisan type of a business.
Artisan shops maybe or something.
Or businesses.
Yeah.
You wanna say artisan businesses then, is that what we?
Yep.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, are we good to go to twenty? All right, uh, let's see, we got a comment here at the end of the first paragraph. Let's see. Connolly, such as the U R A hasn't been involved in any new development because it is in the early stages of collecting tax dollars.
That cannery's now out of the, the area is my understanding too, so that whole paragraph is gone.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, just take out that whole there paragraph because the urban renewal district isn't a part of the downtown.
Okay, so that, that whole section goes, okay? Okay, uh, all right, now we're down in housing initiatives. Uh, we got a comment here on workforce housing. I think Al was commenting on the, the terminology. Uh, we, we've been calling it affordable, um, and then we switched back to workforce. So I think maybe a discussion on whether we wanna say workforce or affordable housing.
And we talked about consistency too. We, we thought about community housing as kind of a more general term.
Yeah, real term, yeah. We've been using community.
It's just that we've interchanged those terms throughout the document and I think there needs to be some consistency. Whether, whether it be community housing, um, afford, what, whatever. But I think we thought about community, did we not?
We did.
Well, again, this is a quote. From, from, uh.
It is, yeah.
Study. So.
Isn't the workforce housing study not?
And that's what I was gonna ask too. It says the county's twenty-twenty-two workforce housing, house study concluded. I don't think that's a thing. I think it's referring to a thing, but.
Right, we can't rename their own document.
Yeah.
We don't know that, that, that was the correct.
Yeah, I think we should just verify. We need to verify whether the.
Personally, I like, I like the term community housing comment. It, 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 it crosses all the, all the, uh, borders.
Well, again, I, I agree with you, Al, but it's, it's a quote.
Yeah, it, it is a quote, Al, from the, the county's twenty-twenty-two workforce housing study. I think this is supposed to be housing study, not house study.
Yeah.
Um, so that's, that, that term came directly from, it's a quote from that document is all it is. So the other thing we could do is, it's like you had said previously, if we don't wanna directly quote that document. We can reword this and paraphrase what that document said and just call it community housing instead of workforce housing.
That would, that, that would be my preference.
Or, or we could just change the, the subtitle there to community housing initiative. Workforce is one of the community housing subs, right? And then you could keep all the references that you have under there, the quotes and the reference to the document.
Yeah, I think the reference is valuable, so I don't necessarily wanna take it out.
We just changed the subtitle to community housing initiative.
You wanna change this to community?
Mm-hmm.
Housing?
Yeah, initiative is fine. And then you've got, those are. Underneath as they are, and that's fine.
So you wanna leave the quote?
Workforce AKA community? Well, again, it's. So there's no, so there's no confusion?
Not unless we, not unless we take out the quotes and we, and we just summarize the, the comment from the workforce housing study.
That would be my preference, Jeremy.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think those quotes are important. And it, it, and I think the issue in the community as a whole. Is housing for the twerk, for the workforce. And by the workforce, I mean everything, everybody from, from those that are, are. In, in more into, you know, working at, at restaurants and bars and, and those, and the seasonal jobs. All the way up to our teachers, our healthcare workers, um, our other, other professionals. That are providing services, so.
And specifically, this is a really important study that was done that I think, again, it was very much directed at workforce. But it does highlight the need for community housing on a whole. So I think it is a good point of reference, but, cause unfortunately, we don't have a community housing study. So I think we need to keep this reference in there and it's okay that we, as planning board in a city, want to say community housing. But using that, the studies that are there, we should use the references that they have.
I agree.
And then I have the problem that that last paragraph has nothing to do with the downtown area. I mean, honestly, the Red Lager Community Foundation did things up at Spire's. What he's quoting here, which was, you know, the ten and.
Is it tied because they need it so that they can exist, even though it doesn't exist within the downtown?
That's kinda what I was thinking.
That was the question that I have. And they're even looking, they're even purchased land in Roberts.
Yeah.
To augment the workforce housing.
These, these projects do help sustain our downtown.
And maybe that's what.
Right, downtown is only viable if you have a workforce.
Yeah.
And so maybe.
So we're leaving the quotes in, is that, just, I wanna clarify, we're gonna leave the quotes as is from the twenty-twenty. Housing study?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so past that, are we, is the, are we talking about then this paragraph, currently several agencies in Red Lodge? Is that where we're talking now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I, I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss anything, cause we kinda went on to the next page, so.
I, there should be something in there that would, that, that says that there's a workforce that. For people that work in the downtown area. Or something. Even though the housing itself isn't in the downtown area, it supports the downtown area.
Yeah, just like if we talk about the bare-toothed path, it's not like it's in our downtown, but it supports our downtown.
What if we started off, um, in support of the downtown workforce, several agencies in the Red Lager area are focused on.
Something like that, to ensure a viable downtown.
Yeah.
Air workforce, right?
Yep, I like that.
Several agencies in the area.
You wanna repeat that for him?
Oh, just to start out with, to ensure a viable downtown workforce, workforce, right? Several agencies in the Red Lager area, blah, 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 blah.
Yep, ties it all together.
We, we were doing it under the currently.
Yep. There you go.
That paragraph.
Oh, that should be.
We need to get rid. Currently, you need to say to ensure a viable downtown several agencies.
Yeah.
Yep.
And then at the beginning of the, the, the top paragraph, I kinda added, I just say, community housing is important for the downtown areas. Housing supports the downtown. In recent years, the city, Red Lager, blah, blah, blah. So I think that kinda sets the tone for the section. And, and how this ties to the downtown.
Yep, that's great. Um, the only note that I have in this paragraph that we're on is, it says the foundations, which I know that that's. They commonly refer to themselves as the foundation, but we're staying consistent throughout the document, I think, just saying the R L A C F.
Workforce housing.
Yep. Just keep it consistent. Up midway through that paragraph.
This one?
Yeah, and if you just have, just the foundation, yeah, where it says the foundations, workforce housing, just get rid of the foundations and then put R L A C F.
R L A C F, workforce housing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, no, don't get rid of all that, just where it says.
Just replace the word foundations with our, our, our C L F, our L A C F.
Do we have, do we have R L A C F defined?
Yeah, it is. Yep.
Right here. Um, okay, and then one comment was, can we get a bigger map? I think that's just a, a product of formatting and I think once we get, we'll leave that comment in there. So that, that Kevin can have that comment and then I think we just work on this probably. I feel, I feel like this map probably goes on a, on the next page. Kevin? So we expand on this and actually read it. Um, although I don't know if, maybe, maybe this doesn't really add anything to this document since it's a downtown master plan.
Yeah, I don't think we know if we need it.
This, this figure probably isn't needed because this could change. I do know the community foundation is, that currently has a R F P out for an affordable housing study. Or for a housing study for the city of Red Lodge, um, that'll, they're gonna be working on over the next, you know, year and a half here. And so this is probably gonna change in the next twelve to eighteen months anyways. So I think maybe let's just take this out.
Which means.
I, I agree.
It doesn't do anything.
Yeah, it doesn't really provide anything, I don't think, that, I mean, I think the text is enough for the downtown master plan. So we'll just take this out. Okay? All right, we're, uh, let's see, I didn't see any comments in tourism workforce. In the document. We good there, at least on this page?
One thing I was wondering if we could add, um, and I know it's kind of highlighted a little bit further down in the document as well. But just talking about optimizing tourism in Red Lodge, one thing that's been a very like frequent conversation. And again, we talk about it down below as well, but just resiliency during all seasons. And becoming less dependent on the mountain and the bare-tooth highway. And opportunities for creating desirable events and attractions and some of the initiatives that people are currently doing for those things. I don't know, it might just be, it, it, we do hit it again, it just might be nice to have it and optimize.
To reiterate, yeah.
Does, does it fit here though? Cause this is just talking about workforce. So this is just talking about labor.
We're, it's under the main page of optimized tourism, so I would sure hope it fits there. Granted, we touch on, there's opportunities, so maybe up above in opportunities, that's probably where that would fit. I just felt like it should be in this section, like in this broader, bigger section.
And, and what was that language you wanted to put in here in?
Uh, I don't have specific language typed out, but just a, a category called resiliency during all seasons. And that can live under opportunities. And then we can flesh that out a little bit, but I just felt like it was, it's a missed opportunity that should be in there.
Did you put that as part of the introductory paragraph to this section?
Yeah.
Where it's.
Mm-hmm.
And then. That would go, yeah, on page nine, top of page nineteen again, under, right in that first introductory paragraph?
Yeah.
And we added during all seasons, maybe resiliency through all seasons.
Yeah, that's exactly what I said. It's resiliency through all seasons and.
For maximum community benefit.
So, so we wanna add a, we wanna add a, a section in this. A, a category in this section that's ba- that's just basically just says resiliency for all seasons. And then talk about strategies for that, is that kinda what you're?
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be great. And again, I think that could go under opportunities, but Jeff also says that it could be in the introduction. I'm, I'm good with either, just, it should absolutely be touched on.
Yeah, cause the change we made, I think, I. Earlier this evening, we, we mentioned for all seasons.
We added that.
Int introductory paragraph.
Yeah, it says to focus, to optimize tourism for maximum community benefit. We said during all seasons, but it could be for maximum compute, uh, community resiliency through all seasons.
I'm gonna, if you guys don't mind, I'm gonna try and come up with some language for that and I'll send you edits if that works.
Yeah, that works. We, we can work on our end too, so.
That'd be awesome.
All right, uh, it looks like we're down into design, uh, page twenty-two. Uh, comments, long comments from Jeff.
Yeah, I can, I can, I can paraphrase that. Basically, what I was suggesting is, is we sorta need an introductory paragraph here rather that, that. Kinda spells out why, why design is important. And that's kind of what I kinda outlined in my comment is, uh. It would be a, a good paragraph to reference the nineteen eighty-four revitalization plan. And perhaps the nineteen ninety-five master growth policies. That set the goal with an example of preserving the architecture design pedestrian scale of the historic downtown.
Sure, okay, yeah, we can work on some text for that. I think that's, I think that's a great idea to, uh. Cause that's really where the design concept kinda came from for, for Red Lodge was those documents, so setting that, providing more of an intro. Um, here, it looks like we've just basically kinda quoted the Montana Main Street program here on their. Design, but I think it's important to set the, like you said, set the tone, so. Um, okay, I'll work with Kevin. We'll, we'll get something drafted for that.
Okay.
Got a comment from Connolly, Monies has been. Moni, sorry, has been gone for ten years or so, so.
More, yeah.
Well, this photo's from twenty-twenty-two, so.
Oh, you're talking about the photo?
They took out Travel Leisure magazine, but that Moni hasn't been here.
No, the, the source of the photo is from Travel Montana and it's twenty-twenty-two. And again, Moni's hasn't been gone that long. I, I mean, I shop there.
So I think, um, I think like with the growth policy, I think we will, you know, we'll. Kevin and, and his crew will work on updated photos, I think, throughout this document, just like we did with the growth policy. So, you know, you know, the comments are great to identify things that we need to change. But this, I think this is one of those, we can get that updated, so.
And I think that when you refer to a magazine like Travel and Leisure magazine, it either needs to be italic or underlined.
They, they putting along.
I think, yeah, I think the, the, the point of this paragraph, I think, is to illustrate the pedestrian scale of signage. And so. If we replace it, I think it'd be important that we replace it. Basically, at the pedestrian scale that looks at the current signage along. In downtown, but.
What, what would be the ideal section of town to photograph for that purpose?
Jeremy, we've reached out to some photographers in town, uh, to either go through their files. Or to, uh, take some pictures in the spring, uh, that'd be more updated. So hopefully, hopefully, uh, those pictures are getting to Kevin and to, uh, Greg.
Yeah, my, my point with this one though is we just don't want a generalized picture of the downtown. I think this one is intended to illustrate. What, what a pedestrian scale streetscape looks like.
And in fact, that particular picture is a quote because you've got it attributed.
Well, again.
We're never gonna not have a business that was.
Again.
Here last year and it's dead this year.
Source is different than the quote, so the source comes from Travel Montana, different, different entirely from Travel and Leisure. Not, it's not specific to that quote.
I, and that, that picture is theirs though.
It, it belongs to Travel Montana, but not Travel and Leisure, two different entities.
Hey, well, we'll work on pictures throughout, we, we got to do that in the growth policy too, so we'll just, we'll just keep that in, in mind that we need to, if we need to update pictures, I mean, I, I see what Jeff is saying, it, you know, this picture does show, you know, kind of gives you a scale of these, you know, the signage and stuff in, in relation to the, the pedestrian and street, you know, street environment, so I think, let's just keep that in mind that, you know, maybe this picture can get replaced with a more current picture, but, um, that this kind of illustrates that, that issue though, too, so. Okay, uh, let's see, next comment, adjust the margin. But I think there was just an issue, it looks like the figure was actually, this, uh, text was in there twice. So I've, I've deleted that in here, so that should fix that now. Okay, uh, one other comment here.
Yeah, I just added in the walkable connections between residential neighborhoods and downtown.
Okay.
Downtown is misspelled.
Yep.
Whoop, wrong one.
In what years the parks plan, is it twenty twenty-five? I don't think it is.
No, it's twenty eighteen, or fifteen, fully old, twenty fifteen.
That's what I was trying to find on here, but I couldn't remember off the top of my head. I always struggle finding our.
Hard to get redone.
Plans.
I'll just put in here a check date, how's that?
Yep.
Okay. All right, any other comments on twenty-two? Hearing none, moving on, we're on twenty-three. I see a comment here, Connolly, uh, why bicycles have to be so careful, park cars, moving cars, I wouldn't consider these streets to be wide.
Because relatively, the relatively level setting amongst wide streets and walkways is appealing for walking and biking around down, round town. I don't think it's even safe to bike around town.
We all go on the back of the side roads.
Yeah.
You avoid it like the plague, because it is not wide.
I think it's wider than some towns, but again, I see where your point's coming from, so.
Yeah, I, I don't, I would at least get rid of the word wide streets.
Yeah, I would just get rid of that sentence.
They will be really surprised when they get their bicycle here.
We'll just take, take that sentence out.
Well, just the word wide, the relatively level setting amongst streets and walkways is appealing for walking and biking around town.
But aren't we saying that we're not trying to make this appealing, we're saying it's not appealing for bikers, though?
We're saying it's not wide.
Let's just say city streets, well, city streets, then we don't, we're not talking about the highways.
Yeah, but, but if, it, I guess what this is, this, the purpose of the sentence, though, is it's saying that wa, walking and biking, but it says around town, and you, like, we've talked about, this should focus on the downtown, but it's saying that it's appealing for walking and biking, and if we're saying that it's not, then it's not just take out wide streets, it's take that whole sentence out, because it's not appealing to bike and walk and bike downtown.
From, from experience, it's, it's appealable for walking, it is not appealable for biking.
Perfect, yeah.
Or you could say non, appealing for non-motorized, and that was, if you were a physicalist, you'd go along with it, but if you weren't, you would just stick with the walking.
What if we just take, what if we just take biking around town out?
Yeah.
What if we just say the relatively level setting uh, and walkways?
Yeah.
Is appealing for walking, yep.
It's, it is walkable, but it, it is not bikeable, I can tell you that from experience.
Yeah, just get rid of it, we need it, we know.
Okay, all right, I think we got that. Okay, we got some comments on historic preservation. Okay, I see what you're saying, uh, yeah, we can reorg, we can reorganize that, Jeff, um, I, I, I see what you're saying. Connolly had such as on infilled, yaps, along Main Streets have been infilled.
Was historically appropriate new buildings, I was trying to think of one.
Bridge Creek.
Been there for.
Ten, or about, I guess thirty years now, but it was originally just a little courtyard.
A really long time ago.
Yeah, so, I mean, it counts, like, again, we're talking, referring back to nineteen eighty, the revitalization plan, eighty-six, thank you, I wasn't going to say which, which eighty, because but again, there's.
I know.
It's eighty-six, right?
Eighty-six.
Well, and again, like, for folks, i- it's good to have that as an example, that you can make it historically appropriate, because again, Bridge Creek did a really good job, the, the dentist's office, the CPA, those are really good-looking buildings, and if we can encourage people to use those as reference.
So do we want to put in here such as?
No, 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 I just think we can leave it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
You don't want to put any specific examples in there, but, okay.
I think it's, it's good to just note that it has happened.
Gotcha, okay. All right, anything else on twenty-three?
Is that paragraph gonna come into play for, like, conditional uses and stuff, I'm just, just wondering if there's, I, 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 I mean, I hope it does, right, that it, we can say we don't, we didn't approve that because it wasn't in line with what we called out in the downtown, the downtown plan.
I think so, because of the historical.
Yeah, I think that goes into the design review portion, and that's in the zoning, so you, when you're looking at building design.
Yeah, I think it kind of brings up sort of a historic comment, I guess. When, uh, we used to be, I guess, uh, North Montana Power at the time, building on Main Street, got converted to this southwestern adobe-style architecture.
Yeah.
That raised a lot of controversy in the community. And so, to me, that's an example of something we would want to deny.
Right.
Encourage that the design was more in keeping with the neighboring buildings in this.
My, my call out is just, this is going to give us the grounds to do that and have it be in staff reports, so knowing that, are we good with that, or do we want to make it any stronger, any more detailed, or any?
I don't think it has to be.
Well, I think, I think if we wanted to make it stronger, we could pick in, like, the examples of buildings that, new buildings that have, that have been incorporated, the historic design of the downtown, and, and the new dental building is one, Bridge Creek is another one.
Prorogative was one that, the prerogative, we did their front.
Peregative, yeah.
Do we want to include the town in that again?
That, that, I don't think that's really history.
It's, but it, it, it used, they used brick, they used things that we have in the downtown. It was part of the reason why we worked so hard on the Dollar Store is we poo-pooed the stucco, because it isn't, it used the downtown. And our, I think it was our growth policy said that it needed to go to the same kind of architecture.
In materials specifically.
And I think we've turned down one because of that as well.
Yeah, I, maybe, we don't necessarily need to list them, but, you know, maybe, maybe this would be a good spot for a photograph of something that's
Yeah.
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 Kind of portrays what the vision is.
Mm-hmm.
Of what, what we mean by a new building with, that incorporates
Because that's one thing.
sort of the historic architecture and design.
I'm pretty sure, like, even the Clay Center, or like, you can even go to the revitalization plan and one of the new constructions, because again, I'm pretty sure Bridge Creek, when they built, it's, it's pretty like-for-like, if I remember correct, I don't know.
Is, is, is this a like spot where we would specify commercial as well? So like, somebody doesn't put, rip out this ATM and put a seven hundred square foot, single-story house right there?
That looks historic.
Well, what I'm, what I'm saying is, is we, do we want to expand that historic, historic, commercial?
Yeah, and I see what you're saying.
Because that, this could be, I, again, I'm just thinking of the types of things that come in and what we have to fall back on to say we didn't approve it because.
Um, I think.
With, I think.
Do we need to add a, it sounds to me like maybe we need to add a section in here for, uh, dis, uh, building design or something that, that we, that we have a paragraph on what kinds of, wha, what we want to see in the downtown, and then examples, like, like picture examples, like you said, that would, I think, make this more, the stronger. Maybe we'd call it building design concepts or something like that, um.
Instead of, is what the word you used a minute ago?
I think, I think the other is that nineteen eighty-four downtown revitalization plan had some examples in it as well that could be referenced.
I was going to say.
I mean, we referenced it in the start of this paragraph, but.
That's what they should be referring back to, because that's not getting incorporated here, but it's a, it's a good reference.
And Dave, I see what you're saying.
Have a, a paragraph in a building design concept section or something that says that we can, you know, reference back to the eighty-four plan, and then maybe we have, we, we add a couple of pictures of those examples that you said in there. You know, for example, these were our recent, more recent buildings that have, you know, been constructed, something like that, I don't, we, we can work on it, we can, we can play with it.
Ultimately, we addressed that in zoning, but this is the guiding document that tells us, I remember all my time on planning board, that was one thing, I thought somebody could come in and put a seven hundred-foot bungalow right there, and we can't tell them no.
Tom says that.
So, that's one thing, I think it is addressed later in the document in organization, like downtown and Red Lodge in twenty thirty, and it, it specifically talks about how intended uses for commercial on the lower and residential up top. So I don't necessarily think it fits with design, because that doesn't, my house could look like a, a seven eleven for all I care, but it could be a house, it's how you use it.
But, but when we talk about it looks like a, a commercial storefront, and it has shops and displays and stuff, there's, that, that dictates a use that, uh, and it excludes some uses as well.
Mm-hmm.
Do we, I like the idea of excluding, we're talking about excluding some uses in the downtown historic district for, the main floor being.
Well, I just, there's certain businesses, and this is a Davidism, that I don't think belong in downtown because they don't fit.
Right.
And something that's not allowed to have any advertising doesn't fit. You know, so that, and, and you can't say, we don't want sex shops downtown, we don't want dispensaries right on Broadway, but you can say, we don't want shops, we, we want shops that have advertising and pictures and look alive.
We have a lot of uses, a lot of that is controlled through the zoning regulations.
But zoning's created from growth policy, and, and I think honestly, that might be more, or, and downtown plan, it does fit in here. Um, I just think that it might be better suited not in design. Again, I think it's more specifically cultural, and that's not really something that is touched on a whole lot throughout this, and that's one thing that was touched on a lot throughout the, the meetings. So it might be a culture of downtown has its own section.
It should be for commercial or service-related businesses.
Yep, with residential up top, residential up top's good, we want to encourage that.
On the main, a, and that's something we probably should say somewhere and start looking at it, because we've talked about not liking it, but.
Right, and then the other thing, too, again, talking about exclusions or that kind of thing versus not so much saying, we don't want X, more so, we want in, want to maintain historic business, or businesses that have historically lived on downtown, in the historic district specifically, and again, if you just put that focus on the historic district.
And, and, and why you like them, yeah.
Yeah, oh, obviously, again, the positives.
So what if we add, so what if we add a section here, if we move this up, kind of, you know, talk about this more in the introduction like Jeff suggested, what if we add a section here at the end, and we call it something like design and land use concepts? And then we add a discussion about everything that you guys are talking about, like, you know, we want to maintain the culture of the down, the historic downtown. We want to maintain the, you know, the, the, the visibility of that historic look, and, you know, you, you know, stuff like that, and we can have a paragraph in here on, you know, what, you know, what, kind of what Dave was suggesting, you know, on what types of land uses that, that should be acceptable in that, and that, I think that would make this more robust in, when you'd go to your zoning then, to say, okay, this is our, this is what our plan says, so now we can make our zoning and, and land use, um, designations for this area such, to match that, right?
Yeah, so, so there was a comment I had written down through one of the focus groups for the downtown, uh, master plan, uh, was that, um, there was, uh, a request to expand the cultural awareness downtown with sculptures, signage, and artwork, et cetera, the meaning being, you know, bring out the heritage and cultural, cultural reminders. So, so that, I think, is what we're talking about, as well as just the, the building features, but the culture, right?
Mm-hmm.
I like the Coca-Cola sign on this side of the building.
Yeah, they were talking about murals, sculptures, et cetera, yeah.
The mural that was in, in, uh, Pride Park, along the side of the building.
Yeah, that, that map was really nice, yeah.
Oh, I was going to say the new mural?
He, he, I heard about it. But I, there was an old one.
Yeah.
What about Jeremy's suggestion, I think I like that, having this heading and then developing what the content is, that captures
A cultural heritage and land.
and the cultural aspects that you bring up.
Yeah.
I think, because this, a lot of this verbiage, if we go with what I suggest, is going to go into the introduction.
Yeah.
Right.
No, I think having one that's about historic cultural, or culture and
Heritage.
Heritage.
Being important to people.
Use and aesthetic, use and design.
Yeah.
Or land use through design, or, um, something along those lines, I do like that. I mean, that's, that's how you could fit it in this section, I still think it's a bit of a, a reach to do that, but it's doable.
I, I go back to, this document is, is a vision of our ideal, perfect future state. We sprinkled up, and it looks magically like this, then we go back and we do our documents to get us there.
We bring back the horses and the wagon, we're trying.
Okay, so we'll, we'll go ahead and, and reorganize this, we'll add some, we'll, we'll kind of add a section in there, and we can massage it, and, and, uh, you know, the next draft that you guys review will have, have some of that in there, so we can review it, so.
I was gonna, I guess, if you're thinking in terms of some subheadings that would go in there, one might be just historic architecture, and then another subheading could be the cultural.
Yeah.
Cultural.
And heritage and aesthetic, so.
And aesthetics in the downtown.
And then one could be use.
And use, yeah.
Yep. Like, I think it'll be multiple.
Okay, uh, we get to move on to challenges on twenty-four.
I don't think we have unclear entryways. About our, our wayfinding signs, we're doing a great job.
I think they're going to be better here soon, Sherry is working on getting that finished.
They got the design done, it just doesn't, it just hasn't finished.
Yeah, it's supposed to be going in the summer, I believe, and I think it's all paid for, so we just got to build it.
I was someplace recently at Downtown Historic, straight to one I grew up in, and they have, like, welcome to historic, you know, a little thing, and, and think about people who used to talk about our canopy of lights and stuff like that, and I don't know if that's just, I'm just, maybe I'm, as the audience, is that goofier, would that be kind of cool?
You could put that in Sebastian's land.
Wrong into town.
Uh, right in the roundabout.
I, they told us that you couldn't put anything in that damn roundabout, but there's so much you could do. Maybe the chamber, although they have quite a bit going on.
I should have stated my whole, sorry.
Um.
Well, so I think this, this section, maybe, maybe we should just say entryways, or, or maybe we should say.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
We should just call this wayfinding, or something like that, and, because I, I think the unclear entryways kind of throws you off right off the bat.
Right off the bat, yeah.
Because then. Because then the first paragraph just talks about prior planning efforts, but then you jump into the second paragraph and it talks about, you know, twenty twenty wayfinding signage was installed, you know, and, you know, it talks about all these things that have been done like kinda since then, so what if we just call this?
If the purpose of this document is ideal future, is ideal future state, unclear entryways is not a heading that goes in that document.
Yeah, I mean, it's kinda goes back to that neg-, it's kind of a negative comment. Or a negative statement almost.
So, it, what about instead of wayfinding, cause it's very specific to entries? Um, what if it was improved entryways? Or improved wayfinding? Cause again, it shows the improvements that have been made and then also discusses plans and the needs for im- improving it.
I don't know if the visiting public creates uncertainty and confusion when driving down two twelve.
I mean, I know
They have no options.
Well, I, I think that's part of the problem, is they don't feel like they have any options. And it, like, again, having wayfinding signage to parking is helpful.
I think Dave.
Well, I understand this whole section is on challenges. So this is kind of looking at what the challenges have been um, or are within the downtown. And so I think just that, I think these headings kind of, if you look at it in that context, when you say unclear entryways, you know, that's a challenge, you know, to, you know, that it's kind of trying to highlight, I guess. But.
I think you nailed that, Jeff, and that it's challenging and so like this particular sentence, welcome to downtown, so is that where the downtown starts? Cause Rotary Park is right there, is pretty accurate, but the downtown by our definition is several blocks to the north. So is that part of the challenges, is improving?
I would kinda, I would say out of, I would just take improved out of this. I still like the idea of calling it wayfinding rather than
Yeah.
Unclear entryways seems like it's, it's just kinda negative in nature, right? But if we just call it wayfinding, that's a challenge, right? One of the challenges in Red Lodge is wayfinding, period. And then this ta- this section talks about that, right? And then, you know, the next, the next section, like, it says inconsistent design review, I think just say design review. Don't, don't, don't say inconsistent design review, right?
Very negative document.
Like incomplete tourism infrastructure, or just say tourism infrastructure, not incomplete tourism. Like, you know, like, try to make this a little bit more positive and not so negative, but.
Absolutely.
Okay, so we got some of those ideas. Uh, there was a comment here on the last section.
I guess I just wanted, I just kinda wanna make a comment kind of referencing what Dave said about the historic part of town. You know, maybe there's some signage there that could be improved that that actually identifies. Here's the beginning of the historic downtown, which I think we've got a little tiny sign there right now that says historic district or historic downtown.
Get a big archway.
Yeah. I'm not sure, I'm not sure it has to be with our zoning, eight through fourteen. I think that you could start the historic district, go through the Roosevelt, I mean, those homes are historic, Roosevelt, it doesn't have to coincide with the true historic district. But historic district would be the tourism district.
Mm-hmm.
So, so you're saying, so in this last paragraph, I, if I'm following you, the last paragraph here talks about efforts to better define the south entrance, um, including Creekside Park and Rest Area. Uh, are you saying like add to this and and, you know, better, you know, provide better um, signage for the historic district? Is that kinda what we're?
Mm-hmm.
Is that kinda what we're talking, like, add to this paragraph?
I was just uh, tearing off of what Dave was commenting about. The distincting, distinguishing between what we're calling the downtown or the central business district from the historic district.
So there's a section at the very end that has like very specific recommendations or um, additional planning team suggestions, maybe that's a good spot to put that, and yeah, down at the bottom. Versus here is just saying we have this, this difficulty, this, this challenge, and then at the bottom, when we're actually talking about things that we could do to improve, that could be one of those recommendations.
Yeah, and there is another.
Well, then maybe we wanna take this whole last paragraph out, cause it does start out, it says, efforts to better define the south entrance are being explored. Including a, you're right, so they're still kinda, we're kinda saying that already.
It's still a challenge, though. I mean, it's still being explored, recognize that that's a challenge, defining the south entrance. So I, I think it deserves to stay there, I'm just saying, I don't, I mean, we need better signage for historic district in this section, I think that's just an opportunity more than anything. I don't know.
I don't mind seeing it in two places either.
So we could, we could, we could, if, we could just go piggyback off the first sentence and say, you know, bet, uh, define, you know, efforts, you know, efforts to define the, the, you know, the historic downtown or something. Define or it's signed or something like that, I don't, well, we can play with some language.
Yeah.
Can, can we, um, I'm, it's a little confusing to say that the, including a proposed Creekside Park. We have a Creekside Park, but it's all one word, and so I know you're describing a different Creekside Park, but which is already, would be an extension of Rotary Park, right? So maybe we need to get rid of Creekside because people might think, wait a minute, we already have a Creekside Park and it's not up on nineteenth.
I just could say, including another.
Or, yeah.
Creekside.
Yeah.
Or just say a, a new, a proposed, oh, let me read this out loud, a proposed park along the creek.
Along Rock Creek.
Yeah, that might be a little bit clearer.
How about we say, including another proposed park, or no? But proposed kind already does that, including a, an additional along the creek?
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's, that'd be, that'd be fine.
Including additional parks along the creek.
I would say Rock Creek, I would.
Yeah, I would add Rock Creek.
Okay.
Including additional parks along the creek, is that what you said?
Including, hold on, yeah. Including additional parks along Rock Creek.
Rock Creek.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, design review section. Don't see any comments there. Okay, uh, tourist, oh, go ahead.
Sorry, go ahead, you're ahead of me, I'm, I'm good.
Uh, tourism, tourism infrastructure. Looks like there's a couple of comments. Uh, it looks like, oh, remove local and many, okay, those are, yeah, those are.
It's enjoyable for residents.
Right.
Yep.
Okay, are we good there?
Uh, one thing I was gonna say we could, um, I just feel like it needs to get somewhere in here into the challenges and designs is sidewalks specifically. Cause their current, it, again, it's something that was brought up in all the maintenance, as we're starting to get into low pedestrian areas. I guess it kinda discusses it a little bit, but talking about, again, we have a lot of sidewalks that are in pretty bad shape, unlevel, eight, bad ADA corners, I think it should be addressed in challenges somewhere, um. Whether that's in low pedestrian traffic areas or just above that, cause I mean, it's not just the low pedestrian areas, it's right downtown too, so.
Well, there, I mean, under tourism infrastructure, there is this comment on residents felt further investment was needed to improve walkability, sidewalks and street lighting. Did you wanna expand on, we could just expand on that.
Expanding on that would be, would be good.
Okay, so expand on this, basically, is what you're thinking?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Alrighty, got that. Okay, twenty-five, we're uh, under low pedestrian traffic areas. Got to change from thirteenth to fourteenth street, so three blocks between tenth and fourteenth street. Comment here from Jeff. Oh, no, Connor, six blocks between.
Yeah, I would, I would just replace in thirteenth with fourteenth.
At six blocks.
Cause Sandy wants to see eighth, not tenth.
We keep referring to that.
Yeah, so, again, just changing that.
Eighth through fourteen.
Yep. So, not tenth through fourteenth, it's eighth to fourteen.
And let me say, six, that makes six blocks, not ten, right?
Not three.
Not three.
I would also remove City Hall from a main attraction.
So those should be six, and you wanna change tenth to eighth?
Right.
Yep.
Okay.
Besides City Hall?
Yeah.
Well, I think Dave, I think, I think Dave's a tra- an attraction.
He's never at City Hall, he's always off working and doing other things too.
Oh, yeah, true, I suppose.
It's on Main Street, so.
Do you wanna take, you wanna take City Hall out?
Yes.
We're like, I could see Red Lodge Cafe because it's one of our historic.
Well, that's one thing they do, is interspread with dozens of restaurants, cafes and shops.
I noticed they didn't say bars.
Yeah.
The stand, it's an attraction around here.
Well, Snow Creek's famous, man.
I know it is.
I don't know if, I wonder if rather than say attractions, it's these are where.
Amenities?
Now, these are where, you know, most of the business activity occurs and maybe it's, and that's why I think including City Hall i- isn't part of that, is part of that, I mean, it's, it's the walkability connectivity to our downtown to.
Yeah, like, so instead of just, instead of business activities or main attractions, what if it's just, um,
Why don't we just say government buildings, public buildings?
But I, how you start it is, again, not attractions, and I don't feel like business activities, but businesses.
Just businesses?
Places of interest?
Oh, places of interest, that's good. Post office, that's a good one. The drugstore. But yeah.
Well, again, we kinda got into this trap in the growth policy a little bit, we, I mean, we could start listing every li- place, I, I think we wanna be careful on, you know.
No.
We could say, we could say places, places of interest such as instead of including.
Yes.
You say such as instead, that way we're just like providing an example.
I like that.
Okay. All right, next paragraph, we got a comment on customer traffic. Do you wanna expand on that comment, or did you wanna see it change? Sandy?
Sandy.
Um, I think that the, these might be the more quieter outlying areas. They may not enjoy the same levels of tourism traffic. But I think it should be said that the residents of Red Lodge, you know, um, because, you know, they cater to the population, chiropractic, banks, dentist, bowling alley, casino, churches. All of those things are in the less tourism traffic. But they're vital to the residents of Red Lodge.
Do I just say, do I just say tourism traffic then? Instead of customer?
Yeah, customer.
There's still customers there, yeah, and I hear you.
They are customers, but it, it's.
Or visitor traffic, visitor tr- no, no.
Yeah, I think tourism traffic is fine.
Yeah.
I think that addresses, I think that addresses the comment, I think. Cause then we're specifically saying these outlying areas don't really enjoy that same level of tourism tech- traffic, cause they're not as connected.
And what if we did the opposite way, that these less visited, quieter, quieter outlined, uh, outlying areas enjoy residential traffic more than tourism?
Well, I think the whole point is they're trying to say that we want people to continue to walk down that section and so if someone does wanna open a retail shop or something, that, that there's a reason to.
This is still a challenge.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, this is still in the challenges section, so.
Yeah.
On the challenges.
Yep. Okay. Okay, I think we're in opportunities now. So architectural facade improvements, I think this is actually where we're getting more into that design stuff now, it looks like. Um, where we talk about the ar- the, this is the saw, the facade discussion in a historic look. Um, I'm not sure what's going on with that picture exactly, but, um, let's see.
Guess those are facades.
Yeah.
I think what I was suggesting here is be, not being necessarily a part of this document, but developing a a catalog of design examples that feature the the architectural elements that we're looking for in.
Could that be an appendix?
Could be an appendix, yeah.
Or we, or we could identify that as just a, uh, 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 you know, a to-do, on our to-do list towards the end of the document. We could just add that to our. Yeah, our list, our cat, you know, add that cataloging to, uh, you know, as a, as a, um, had a brain fart. Uh, uh, our to-do list, basically, yeah.
Yeah, I, no, I agree with that, I, I think because it said opportunities, I was thinking in terms of what an opportunity is to develop a catalog of, of, uh, the kinds of architectural elements that we would be looking at, looking to replicate in our downtown area.
Hey Jeff, are you watching the clock, or do you have a stopping place in mind?
Yeah, I just looked up and it's seven fifteen, so. Um, trying to.
Yeah, the section goes for a bit.
I guess we could finish this page and start at, on page twenty-six after the picture. How's everybody feel about that?
Now, finish this page.
I think that was kind of the last comment really was, so I added a little, on the next page, I added a, uh, just a sentence, a catalog of design features would assist with these efforts. And then down below, we'll have that on our to-do list, uh, as well.
Okay.
Does that, that work?
Yeah.
I do have one more comment for this page. Uh, in the paragraph that starts in twenty twenty-three, although we see up was awarded National Park Service funding. Uh, the last sentence, it says, a great way to judge community support, can we put measure? Which is a little bit less aggressive of a word.
Yeah.
So as a pilot project, this is a great way to measure community support for future, yeah. Perfect.
Yep.
You don't, you don't like to judge people, or you don't like to judge things?
Oh, heavens, no.
I don't like to admit it.
Okay, so.
I'm not trying to think, but I'm measuring a lot.
Uh, so we have more comments on twenty-six, so if, if, uh, if everybody's okay with that, since we're at, you know, almost seven twenty now, we'll just start on twenty-six next time.
Yeah, okay.
That's a living community.
Thanks, Jeremy.
I thought somebody's been watching too many now. Somebody's been watching too many zombie movies.
Ooh, a living community.
A living community for real.
Thank you, thank you, Jeremy.
Yep.
Is there a list of facades in that revitalization plan?
What's that?
Is there a list of facades or examples of fac-?
Oh, yeah.
Facades in that revitalization plan?
The only thing I recall is kind of these, uh, summaries of what the, this is the.
Yeah.
What these pages taken from the revitalization plan had.
I'm gonna have to look at it again, if there's something.
All right, so I guess, uh, moving on to written correspondence. Um, any staff communications and updates?
I don't have any.
And, and when I last talked to Greg, he doesn't have any applications, so I think the only thing for our next meeting will be the continuation of the downtown, uh, master plan review, at least as of this point.
And just to reiterate, we have an assignment to review what we're calling the downtown area in our introduction. So everybody take a look at that.
Let me draw a map.
And come back with some ideas.
Yeah, so we'll hit that first thing, the next meeting, we'll hit that, um, first, uh, very first thing, and then we'll jump into page twenty-six.
Okay. Um, petitions, communications from the audience.
The only question that I had that we probably want to look at in zoning is, you know, that they tore down that building on the west side of Broadway.
Mm-hmm.
You know, which hole there is, and I was told that that's community entrance on that side of the street, so that could be a forty-foot building right in the middle of that neighborhood. It is on the.
It's like a block past Murph.
Just, just, just past Murph on the south.
Oh, next to, okay, yeah.
Yeah, it's, I think, one, between Prinities and Murph.
It's like I didn't even notice.
The church, yeah.
Gone, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't notice for like a year that it was gone.
But they reminded me that because of our zoning, there could be a forty-foot building.
Wow.
Actually, it's in the transition zone, so I don't know.
Didn't we, didn't we do one side transition on one side?
No.
Did we get rid of that? Yeah, because that's what they had told me, and I was thinking, I thought it was both sides.
Further down.
Yeah, we moved it, I think we moved the transition zone further.
Further down.
Anyway, I meant to double check that because that's not what we want to have there.
I remember looking at the zoning and thinking that they could put a forty in there, but I don't remember if it comes to, if it's automatic or if it comes to planning for conditional use. Because my, my, my recollection is, is that they have plans and stuff that they have proposed and already said that that's what they're coming out with. But again, that's been a year ago since we heard that.
Yeah.
I can put it as a, as a follow-up, I know.
Just make sure that they haven't applied for a building permit.
It would not, yeah.
No.
They what?
It wouldn't.
Well, my, my, my recollection is that what it was, kind of actually did, because I know they were, I have an awareness of it because the neighbors had raised issues. And when the neighbors looked at it, they said, oh, we're fine with that, because it's not doing maybe what they could do, but what they were doing.
So they do have plans.
They, they did, that's my recollection, now, plans change until it's built.
Is this topic something that we should look at and investigate, um, and put on the?
I've already downed those, so I can report on it at the next meeting.
Okay, because we're in public comment right now, so she's brought up a, a, a a subject that we need to investigate, is that correct?
Yep.
So this between fourteenth and fifteenth?
I believe so.
Think so, okay.
Between thirteenth and fourteenth.
Oh.
Thirteenth is Oak Creek, so it's fourteenth.
Yeah, fourteen and fifteen, yeah.
On the west side.
It's a dirt slop, right?
We need, it, and if it's, if we're ready, then we need to get it to Greg for, to be on the agenda for our next meeting. Unless we can handle it.
Well, I, I don't think, I don't think they.
Unless we can handle it administratively.
Yeah, there's no action that needs to happen on it, just get it in our brains.
Yeah, I think Dave's just gonna report on, just, we'll just report on, uh, what the zoning is and what's allowable there. We, we haven't received an application for anything there, so I don't think there's any action for, for that part of it. It's just more of an informational thing, so you guys are aware of what could go there. And then, at that point, you guys could decide if you want to try to.
Right.
Do something with it, or if you're not worried about it, so.
I just didn't want to get into a discussion that wasn't on the agenda. She brought up, brought up a point, and now we need to follow up.
Yep.
Any other, uh, comments? Anybody online have any comments?
Great job, guys, I appreciate all your hard work, thanks for all you're doing.
Thank you. John, are you okay? Everything down, are you in Colorado?
Yep, I'm good.
Mayor has a comment. I would add, just as, as an informational, um, again, this is a, this is an FYI. Um, we will be having a conversation later this week, um, regarding a potential annexation request immediately to the north of town, so. Um, there's, there's lots of different elements in that, with, with, the planning team's got a call on Friday on that, but just so. Obviously, that will come to you guys in forty-seven different forms between now and then, but in case you hear or get wind of it.
But for it to be an agenda item that's down the road.
Yeah.
All right, anything else? Need an adjourned.